We've already been late by five minutes because we've spent too much time on the last session. This session is on transport and I'd like to remind members that if you would like to speak, please press this, press for speak button and if you're asking questions then please state the top right-hand corner, answer serial, reply serial number. First of all, defer to the secretary for an opening remark. Chairman, I'd like to brief members on our priority areas under the Transport Pavilion in the new financial year. Regarding major transport infrastructure projects, the construction works of the West Island Line, the South Island Line, East to Kuntong Line, Extension Shatin Central Link and the Hong Kong section of the Guangzhou-Shenzhen-Hong Kong Express Rail Link are in progress. We expect them to be completed from 2014 to 2020. With these new lines, more than seventy percent of the population will be brought into the railway catchment area. And we have, we are conducting the stage two public engagements exercise for the review and map update of the railway development strategy. And we will, upon the completion of the exercise, the consultant will consolidate the views collected and carry our comprehensive analysis. The study is expected to be completed within this year. We're also pressing ahead with the related projects within Hong Kong of the Hong Kong-Joaime Macau Bridge, including the Hong Kong Boundary Crossing Facilities and the Hong Kong Link Road Projects and various infrastructural projects. In accordance with the operating agreement signed in 2007, the government is conducting a five-yearly review of the fare adjustment mechanism with the MTRCL. The objective is to enhance the coverage with a view to incorporating service performance and profitability of the MTRCL and public affordability as factors for consideration. We've arrived at the final stage. The administration has proceeded with a public consultation on the proposed measures to improve traffic distribution among the row harbor crossings. We aim at, we're considering options aimed to divert some traffic from the cross harbor tunnel to eastern harbor crossing. In general, the options are forecast to bring about thirty to forty percent queue reduction at the cross harbor tunnel during rush hours. This will bring about economic benefits and improvement of air quality. And in relation to civil aviation, the government has given in principle approval to adopt the three-runway system. The airport authorities carrying out the relevant planning work, including environmental impact assessment and scheme design. The government will make a final decision on whether to proceed with a three-runway system. And in the meantime, the AA will continue to implement the midfield expansion project and conduct a study on building another ten remote aircraft parking stands to cope with air traffic demand. The G P Executive has announced in a policy address to further develop Hong Kong as an international maritime centre, moving towards high value-added maritime services. To meet this goal, the F S proposes to designate a hundred million dollars to establish a training fund for maritime and aviation transport, air transport, to train up manpower for the industry. We're conducting a consultancy, a study on enhancing Hong Kong's position as an international maritime centre and also that another one on Hong Kong on our ports to make better use of the existing port facilities. We're also undertaking the preliminary feasibility study for developing Container Terminal Ten. We'll take into account the economic situation, the global, local ones, and performance of the port centre in the development of C T Ten.
On the logistics front, we just released the third logistics site in Ching Yip for open tending on the twenty-eighth of March. Besides, we have reserved ten hectares of land in Chinmung West for the provision of high-value-added logistic services. We'll conduct detailed T I A on this development proposal to ascertain its visibility. We'll also conduct a strict consultation. Chairman, I'd like to respond to the recent strike at the Kuicheng Container Terminal. First of all, the administration is deeply concerned about the incident. The Secretary for Labour and Welfare is actively conducting mediation to facilitate dialogue and communication between the employers and employees with a view to resolving the dispute A S A P through consensus. During this period, the T H Bureau has been closely in touch with the port operators and the industry to maintain an overview of container terminal and port operations. In the short term, there have been shipping companies having to adjust their ship schedule to Hong Kong and some freight has been delayed. But I believe so long as our container terminals resume normal operation A S A P, the impact on Hong Kong's economy should be minimal in the long run. Our port has competitive advantages in a number of areas, including our free port status, efficient customs, as well as multimodal transportation system connecting Hong Kong with the mainland and the rest of the world. My colleagues and I would be pleased to answer questions from members. Thank you. There are eleven members having pressed the button, five minutes each. Ms. Chan Yun-han, Christopher Chung, Chen Kam Lam, Wong Kwok-hing, Wu Chi-wai, Gary Fans in Chiang Kai, Pun Shiu-ving, Ng Leng-sing, Kwak Wai-kang. Chan Yun-han, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to welcome the last paragraph from the secretary. I know you are not the leading official, of course it is Matthew Cheung, but I do criticize you that you have intervened too late. You should be more proactive, but it is not you and also this is not my main question. My question is more specific. This is also a concern of the Kuntong and Wan Tai-sin districts. I know the secretary knows this. There is a big infrastructural project here, the Anderson Quarry. It is said that seventy thousand people would be housed in both private and public housing to be built there. This is already a very crowded district. Yes, you might want to provide more public housing, but then in twenty fifteen, sixteen, there will be forty thousand people moving in already in, at Anderson. And at the quarry mine there, there will be twenty thousand people more and also near Ping Shik and Choi Wan Estates. When people come down from Choi Wan in the morning, they would have to stay in traffic jam for forty-five minutes. This is a well-known fact. The Kuntong D C and Wan Tai-sin D C have mentioned this and I have also contacted your middle-ranking officials. The feeling I get is that you are really lagging behind the situation. They know there is a problem, but they would like to divert people to the east so people can go to Potat Village. And I laughed, I said, if you can foresee congestion, why don't you face up to it? And they said, when people go to Choi Hong and Al Chi Wan Estate, the roads there might have to be widened, but we said the roundabout is already congested. How can you say you want to expand it? And then, like peeling an onion, they said they might want to think about the future development of Choi Hong Estate. Why am I bringing it up here with you, secretary? Because I, I'm really frustrated. You are not bold enough to do long-term planning from the environment point. When things happen, you add a footbridge, a flyover, and the entire city is like being bundled up in spaghetti. Just look at the airport, it is a typical example. I'd like to ask you, if you can foresee problems, why are your middle-ranking officials still wavering? The planning department was here, the C E D D was here, the transport department was here, the consultancy was also here. And the D C was so angered, we have been talking about this for so long and yet there is no solution. I want to ask you, being a government with stamina, if you can see that you expect congestion, why don't you take stock of the situation now? If you plan to demolish Choi Hong Estate, you have to let people know forty thousand people are going to move in in twenty fifteen. What is going to happen? Another twenty thousand will move in and other buildings in the area would also be increased in height. So as the secretary, of course, we, we are a modern city, we have to build more roads, but you have to be forward-looking. You have to answer the question so our city is not bundled up in spaghetti, so you can tackle the congestion problem. Chairman, I think Ms. Chan has talked about a particular case and I think I should go and look for the details, but I do think that your general point is well-made, that indeed we should complement development with a suitable transport network. When we develop housing and other facilities, we should complement that with a row network. Indeed, whether it be housing or other projects, we do have to do the relevant T I A at the planning stage. If transport is affected, we also have to propose measures, say road conversion, diversion, or even road building. Ms. Chan mentioned a particular case, I don't know whether the T D would like to add. Commissioner for Transport. As the chairman said, as the secretary said, actually, when we do large-scale projects or not-so-large-scale projects, if we can see some impact on transport, we have to do the T I A at the planning stage. Ms. Chan talked about a particular case. Right now, I do not have the T I A information with me. Chairman, if you would allow me, we can take up the details with Ms. Chan after the meeting. Mr. Christopher Chung. I'd like to talk about health of bus workers. You understand, at a steep road in Chaiwan last year, there was a grave accident because the bus driver suddenly entered into a coma or fainted. After that accident, I'd like to ask the administration what it did with the bus companies in order to go to the root of the problem. Your reply cannot satisfy me. I'd like to know whether you have any plans to improve the situation so the bus company can act to improve the health of its workers. If not, will you take up such an effort with them in the future? Secretary. The T D is following up the issue with the bus company. I'll defer to the commissioner. Yes, after the bus accident in November last year, we did talk to the two bus companies to reveal the situation. We understand that the bus company did take up the issues with the labour unions. The two major labour unions said that with regard to the coverage of the physical examination required, they are in general happy with it. But I know the bus companies have also talked to the doctors to review and analyse previous physical examination reports. They are still doing it and the results will be known. Right now, we do not have a final, final decision. But the bus companies are open, they would like to take up more improvements if there is a need. But you have not answered my question. You're asking the bus companies to talk to the labour unions. You say the labour unions are happy and the bus companies are open-minded, but you are government, which should be appropriately proactive. What are you doing? You should ask them to do more. You should help them or you come up with an improvement plan for them to follow or else the same problem will come to pass. What are you doing? Commissioner. Chairman. In terms of the physical examination of bus drivers, there will be reports and data collected, but this has to do with the privacy of the workers. And the administration doesn't have and shouldn't get the data. We are closely monitoring the bus company in this and at our regular meetings with the bus companies, we are following up the progress. We understand bus companies are working with their doctors to analyse the health data in a scientific manner, to review whether improvements can indeed be made. If there is a conclusion, they will let us know. So we are happy with what the bus companies are doing. On the other hand, Chairman, if you dismiss the issue with privacy, Mr. Chung, can you ask your question in a more direct way? Can the administration get independent people to examine and investigate into the problems of bus company operation? You're not doing anything, so there is no improvement and the problem remains. So what are you doing? If this is what the commissioner is doing, then anybody can be in your position. You are the commissioner. What role does the commissioner play, please? Secretary, let me say a few words. Last year, there was this bus accident and at the Transport Panel Special Meeting of the Legco, we discussed the issue and the labour unions and the bus company also were represented and the T D therefore is following up the issue. Of course, the administration has a view. We look at safety and the health of bus drivers, those are important to us. But then, in the process, we must also seek to understand the views of the bus companies and also bus drivers. Mr. Chung, any follow-up? Well, never mind, they're not going to be able to answer the question. Chen Kam Lam.
Thank you, Chairman. A few questions, please, very brief ones. I hope the administration will answer me in detail. I'd like to ask, sorry, can you let me know the reply number? Please do not talk about the question number. Please quote the T H B bracket T number. Sorry, I only have my own question number. Never mind. Okay, it's here. T H B bracket T one four three. Thank you, thank you very much. I'd like to ask the administration whether it has conducted any studies into the cause because the rate of usage of many car parks is such that at the City Hall, the rate is very low. Did you look into the causes? Is it because of the fare charging mechanism? Can we adjust it so more motorists would patronise our car parks? Secondly, can you again get us the reply number?
Yes, I, I'm looking it up, I'm trying to look it up. Just now, the secretary said that in twenty thirteen, fourteen, with regard to the port development strategy, there will be a study and by the middle of the year, the study will be completed. I'd like to know whether the administration will tell the consultancy this. Because of the recent strike at the container port, some vessels have gone to other ports. I'd like to know whether this will have an impact on container vessels visiting the port of Hong Kong in the future. So you do a more accurate study and then the application for fare increase by G M Bs. The record is very bad. I hope the department can look into that further because many applications have been sitting there since June twenty twelve. Why is that so? Why the delay? Well, I'm not asking you to rush into it. We like the fare increase to take place as late as possible, but that shouldn't be our intention. If fares should go up, they should, if they should go down, they should. If they shouldn't go up, then don't allow them to go up, but you should not take so much time to process the applications. Secretary, let me talk about the port development strategy and then G M Bs and car parks, those can be taken up by the commissioner. Mr. Chan mentioned the recent dock workers' strike at Kuicheng. So some liners have gone to other ports. We believe this is only temporary because the Hong Kong port still has its own advantages as listed in my speech. The Hong Kong Port Development Strategy twenty thirty study will take a comprehensive look at, first of all, the challenges we face and also how we fare vis-à-vis our competitors and also the increase in freight being handled at the port, local development of the economy and mainland economy and also the world economy, etc. In terms of the container terminal business, we know that comparatively, our cost is high or higher than our neighbours, so we should go for high value-added services. I'll defer to the commissioner. With regard to government car parks, multi-story car parks, we have looked into it indeed. Most of these were built twenty, thirty years ago and at that time, the social environment was such that and also private buildings seldom had their own car parks, but in the last two decades or three decades, many business buildings now have their own car parks. And also, they provide a lot of concessions for people who shop there. Free parking is provided for shoppers and compared to these standalone government car parks, they enjoy an advantage over us. We can see that point and that is why, that is why in terms of parking concessions, we do have concessions for day parking or night parking and it has slightly increased the usage rate. But then, generally speaking, we do not compare that favourably with the commercially operated car parks. We are not so attractive, we are not so convenient. And planning-wise, if the land can be for another use, which is more efficient, we are quite happy to give up the land. As for G M Bs, please be quick. As for G M B fare applications, sometimes even if they make the application, we have to study the data relating to their cost and if the operator doesn't give us all the information, we have to go to and fro and then we'll have to consult the district councils, which may have many questions and we may have to go to the district councils more than once in order to seek their views. Wong Kwok-hing. I have three questions. Number one, secretary said he is talking about a fare adjustment mechanism with the M T R C L as a last step in the process of negotiating with them the operating agreement. Can the administration promise that as long as you do not iron out an agreement with them, the fares of the M T R should be frozen? Secondly, reply number one three eight. Bus route rationalisation. Secretary, at the policy briefing on the P A, I asked you this question and that is fares after crossing the harbor crossing for cross harbor buses, they should be aligned with the district routes so people will be happy to take these routes and so the capacity can be better utilised. You said you would follow up, so what's the progress? Number three, reply number one four five. Tunnel capacity and tunnel congestion. Again, at the policy briefing on the P A, I asked the secretary this question and the secretary promised to follow up. My question is, hopefully, the western cross harbor tunnel should only charge ten dollars or fifteen dollars for vacant taxis. So vacant taxis can also make use of western crossing instead of crowding other tunnels. You said you would follow up, so what have you done? Three questions. Secretary, on the M T R C fare adjustment mechanism, as I said in my speech, the review has entered into the last stage and we are confident that the revised fare mechanism will take effect on the first of June.
Of course, we need to complete the review procedure before we can announce that. As for route development, route reorganisation or rationalisation, at the previous panel meeting or at the post-addressed briefing, Mr. Wong asked whether the cross harbor routes after they have crossed the harbor would have a sectional fare arrangement. Because of time constraint, I don't have much time to explain, but if there is sectional fare after crossing the harbor, that may affect the non-cross harbor routes. I'll let the department to answer Mr. Wong in detail and Mr. Wong may follow up if need be. As for the W H C and whether vacant taxis can be given a different charge in the diversion of traffic, that's the view of Mr. Wong and we will follow the matter up in discussing the diversion of traffic among the three channel, uh, three cross harbor tunnels. I have not received any reply from the administration on this second and third question. I hope after today, the department will respond to my demand for cross harbor routes. If they can have sectional fare, that will help a lot and that will avoid further rationalisation of routes, so to speak. As for the fare adjustment mechanism, my concern is not when, there will be a result. My concern is if there is no outcome, then the M T R C L should freeze its fare. The question has not been answered. But, Mr. Chairman, I've already said that there will be an outcome. He asked you whether before the outcome, the price will be, the fare will be frozen. If there is no outcome of the amendment, then there will be, the whole system will follow, but if there is an outcome, then the outcome will prevail and the outcome will be available in June. I think before there is any outcome, any proposal should be discussed with the council. Would they have to change the law? Chairman, we don't need to change the law. Mr. Wu Chi-wai.
Chairman, I have two questions. The first one has been mentioned by a member earlier, that's about the construction of housing project in Anderson Road and that will cause traffic problem in the whole district. In T H B one, two, three, concerning the climbing system, slope climbing arrangement, there is no suitable arrangements concerning the development of the former Anderson Quarry. Will you have this slope climbing arrangement to bring relief to traffic congestion in the area? In relation to T H B forty, the provision of street lamps, the illumination, there is problem of light pollution. I want to ask the administration with regard to the illumination standard of our street lamps, when was the last review done and will the administration conduct another comparative study objectively so as to reduce illumination, so as to save energy and reduce light pollution? With regard to the Anderson Quarry project, whether there is any escalator arrangement? I don't know the details, maybe the secretary, the commissioner can supplement and I will give a written reply if necessary. As for light pollution caused by lamps, the street lamps, the commissioner, the director will answer the question. I don't know whether the colleagues can answer the question. The Commission of Transport, who will answer the question? Commission of Transport or Director of Highways? The Director of Highways will speak on lamp, uh, street lamps. Okay, street lamps. As said by Mr. Wu, we do have a standard concerning the illumination of streetlights and we comply with international standard. If Mr. Wong, Mr. Wu asks, when did we do the review? I was not able to, the last review, I was not, I'm not able to tell Mr. Wu of hand. Now, we have different illumination standards for different types of roads and we set our standard accordingly. As for light pollution, we attach importance to that. And we set our standard accordingly. As for light pollution, we attach important to that. If we find a place too well illuminated, that will be a problem and we will adjust our street lights accordingly. And we also welcome advice. If citizens commented, a comment that our street lamps will affect them, we will adjust the illumination level and the direction of illumination. As for the Anderson Road project, at present, we don't have such a plan as said by Mr. Wu. We welcome advice from the district councils and members of public and councillors. And we will carefully consider your proposal. Mr. Wu. On different occasions, we have raised a question in relation to Anderson Road project. The project will increase the pressure on traffic and there are suggestions to divert traffic to the east going through Changquanou. But that goes against the wish of the future residents of Anderson Road, obviously. With regard to your slope climbing system, I mean, the provision of escalators, I think that will be related, that will be relevant. And I hope that you can get some resources for the provision of escalators. As for the provision of barrier-free access, the administration earmarked two hundred million dollars to make sure that barrier-free is a regular, regular structure, is a regular item. Now, the provision of escalators, will there be resources earmarked so that escalators can be provided and the scheme can be completed accordingly? At present, there is no such financial arrangement. As for the provision of escalators, uphill, that, there is a point system. Now, if there are suggestions, then the proposal is subject to a point system. Will you earmark resources? Mr. Wu, your time is up, you cannot follow up. These items involve huge resources and they also take time. In the long term, whether there is any room for enhancement, we are considering that. Mr. Gary Fan, I have two questions. First, THB oh four two, second, THB one four, one four five. From twenty twelve, eleven and twelve, the sampling taken in comparison with previous years increased by four times, but the number of staff members in the establishment has not increased. Does it mean that there is a substantial increase in workload of the inspectors? And will the administration increase resources to deal with that? Director Marine will speak on that. Mr. To, Mr. Liu.
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of inspections or spot checks, rather, after the recent incident, we step up our inspections and our spot checks and therefore the number has increased. We do have different inspections. The one I just mentioned is different from the daily inspections we made, we make. In terms of manpower, if need be, we may strengthen that. Is there such a need? Since there is an increase in number of inspections, after the incident, we have stepped up our inspections. We have done the major ones and we do have some follow-up work to do. In terms of manpower, we'll try to redeploy our colleagues to do that. I have to ask again, the second question is about THB one four five. The administration is not, one five four, the administration is not able to respond to my question. If a mainland vehicle applies for a Hong Kong license, how many rejections were there? In the past four to five years, there were more than one hundred thousand mainland licenses which can be, which have been converted into local licenses. Now, I have, and in comparison with the four hundred thousand odd licenses, that is a substantial sum. Now, some, some British citizen in the past, they could go to, when they go to the UK and they convert a Hong Kong license into British licenses and they could do that, but now they, they were refused. They were asked to get a, get a permit, get a confirmation from Hong Kong whether the unit was, the license was a result of conversion of mainland license. Now, the administration is not able to answer me the question I asked under TH one five four. And that's about mainland conversion, mainland license being converted into local licenses. As a result, Hong Kong licenses are no longer well-recognized by overseas authorities. I think that's the, about the understanding of the question. Now, a license, we are understanding is vehicle license. And we just answered the question according to vehicle license. That's about mainland vehicle license, mainland vehicles who need to come to Hong, which needs to come to Hong, which need to come to Hong Kong and get the ICP. But in fact, Mr. Fan has asked a question on driver's license. I think you can give us the numbers and can you also check the records? Where do they get the license? Or where did they get the license? My understanding is the transport department doesn't have the record. Now, if they have converted their mainland driving licenses into Hong Kong licenses, then, then the transport department doesn't have the record. Say if a Hong Kong driver's license, if your license is obtained in Hong Kong, you can get your license automatically when you go overseas. We can make a declaration and then we'll get the license. Now, in fact, we've answered the question in THB one five nine. We have the number of applications, number of rejections. How long did you keep this record? Say, do you have a record that my license is obtained in Hong Kong? If it is obtained too long time ago, then we may not have the record. The computer system was not established forty or fifty years ago. If we have to rely on paper record, we may not have a long record. But if it is in the computer, we can have that. It's not difficult. It's only after SEPA that there is the mutual recognition. Now, if you have the conversions of mainland licenses into Hong Kong licenses, then you can by elimination know what is, what are the licenses obtained in Hong Kong.
Xin Jiu-kai. I know that is centered on light pollution, but does the administration have any plan to convert street lights into LED lights? When will that be completed? Is there any plan at all? And how much money can be saved? How much electricity can be saved? My second question is thirty eight, THB thirty eight and thirty nine is about railway development. The railway development Strategy Two Thousand consultation was completed and the study will be completed within this year. Can more be said on that? Some railways may have economies of scale and MTRCL may be asked to build them. The MTRCL may do that because there is, there is profits to make. And sometimes the administration may be asked to provide subsidy to the MTRCL. Say, for example, the Wong Shuk-hang extension is an example. The government gives some subsidy to the MTRCL. I just want to know after you've completed your review, how much time is needed to go ahead with these projects? I'm not going to ask you to list the projects one by one. Shouldn't the highways department answer LED lights first?
Yes. Trans Amisin's question. I think Mr. Sin's question is based on the assumption that LED is more power-saving. But that's not the case. In fact, our street lights are high voltage lights. And we use the most energy-saving street lamps. Let me now, we can produce one hundred and thirty lux per watt. Even for high-power LED, it cannot achieve this efficiency. The best efficiency achieved by LED is just eighty to ninety lux per watt. So at present, our street lamps are very power-saving. In terms of low or medium energy level, LED may be more effective. But we will, we may make replacement accordingly. As for the update and review of Railway Development Strategy Two Thousand as said by Mrs. Sin, we are in the second stage of public engagement. The first stage was completed. That was about cross-region corridors and second is about local railway. By the end of this year, the consultant will complete the study and the recommendations and outcomes will be made, given to the administration. And then next year, we will decide on the strategy. After there is a strategy, we still need to conduct further studies on these supported items. We need to conduct technical studies. Now, we have to consider the development, the need, development need, population, financial effectiveness, economic effectiveness and financial arrangements. And there are many ways of financing. That can be a traditional financing, say, railway plus property development or whether the MTRCL is just the agency for the administration. And financing can be done by government subsidy or by other means. There are different modes. There are pros and cons for different modes of financing. And after we've decided on what items to be embarked on, then we can follow that through. Why the cross-region study has to wait for the, why the announcement of the cross-regions study has to wait for the completion of the local enhancement? Well, that is because of the link between different regions and also parallel lines, parallel railways, so on and so forth. In fact, the railways are interrelated. The routes are interrelated. Will not defer the completion. By the end, that will, by the end of this year, there will be a complete report.
Kun Xiao-ping, I have three questions. First, THB zero one one, a question asked by Mr. Wu Chi-wai. The EMSD conducts inspections on the MTRCL regularly. The East Rail from time to time in the past few years had problems with the railway tracks. There were cracks in the railway tracks. In twenty ten, there was only one inspection. The island line, it was less than the island line. What's the standard for inspection? Are there any specific policies to deal with that situation?
And the second question is one four six is to follow up on the bus route rationalization. In twenty thirteen, the number of plants they have is sixty-seven. It's smaller than previous years. In the administration's reply, they mentioned a number of factors for consideration. But they affect figures of previous years and not the latest situation. So I would like to get some answers about the reason for the drop. And the third question has been covered by other members as well, the follow-up on the use of government car parks. Reply number one six five. From the administration's reply, they say that the utilization rate is below forty. Most of them are in the urban area, which should have a higher demand. With a, there is a low utilization rate, how can they ensure optimum use of resources? The secretary answered about the competitiveness of private car parks. So are there any follow-up questions? Are there any more effective measures to ensure effective use of resources? Say, for example, further reduction of fees to boost the utilization rate of car parks? And are there any specific suggestions? For the first questions, Director for the EMSD. For the second and third questions, Director for Transport. Thank you for the question. In relation to inspections on railway tracks, we've always used a criterion of risk as the basis. We will consider the loading capacity of the vehicle on the track and frequency. That's the prime consideration. After that is the result of the inspection, whether any irregularities are spotted. If so, we will strengthen the inspection for the line. And if the result of the inspection is satisfactory, then it would, there will be a less. That's always been our approach, of course. We take into consideration approaches of advanced economies. We review with the MTRCL and VEP and also reviewed their repair guidelines and the results. And if necessary, we will propose recommendations. Ingrid. In relation to bus routes rationalization, if you look at the figure for this year, under the regular rationalization project, the number of routes seem to be lower. But apart from looking at the individual routes, we also use an area approach to take a general look of the bus routes in the, in the district. We will look at the utilization. If it's underutilized, we will leave it till the area approach stage for an overall rationalization. So sixty-seven is in are those lines under the regular rationalization? That, this is an annual exercise. We have not included the rationalization to be included in the area approach. Two taken together will be higher than the individual district of regular rationalization. Or whether there is any room for decrease of fees for car parks. We see that our, our fees level is comparable to the private sector. We also rolled out concessionary measures. And as a result, some of the fees are lower than those in the private market. But we still have some, some car parks that have a low utilization rate. And they are the reasons I've just stated. Mr. Ng. Answer one, reply one three nine. It's a lengthy answer containing a lot of information. Eleven pages, I believe. Eleven pages, I believe, is what is one of those most lengthy ones. It gives information about an increase of fares. In paragraph six of the secretary's speech, it covers about the different options of row harbor crossing. And there is a consultation. I have a question for the administration. Has, have they conducted any studies about the traffic diversion? In a short period, there may be an improvement. But we're talking about a section between Causeway Bay and Hong Kong, which is a through fare. Would there be any long-term, more effective measures in place for traffic diversion? Say for example, for the traffic near the exit, ingress and egress of the Cross Harbor Tunnel? Could erect a superstructure that can alleviate the traffic congestion effectively? And to put in place a traffic diversion to divert traffics to where they're going to? Say for example, Kowloon bound, Hong Kong bound, and also interchange? This will reduce costs and is environmentally friendly. And will they consider allowing franchise buses to be included in the short-distance diversion, traffic diversion? Secretary. I don't want to give an answer off the top of my head here. And while I will leave it for the consultancy, in their consultancy studies. And the member is right, the Cross Harbor Tunnel is the most popular. So it's got the highest traffic level. And one of the options is to increase the toll fees for the Cross Harbor Tunnel for it to be highest. There are also other options. Well, the main problem of the Western Tunnel is the link road, the link road is rather congested. We're talking about that after the commissioning of the Central Yuen Chai Bypass in twenty seventeen, the situation will improve. With increasing use of the free harbor, row harbor crossings, there will be traffic congestion. So we're talking about how to reduce the use of vehicles. Say for example, with the shutting central line, railway services will, will better meet passengers' needs and they will switch to using railway services. We're talking about an interchange platform, a feasibility study. You can set out the pros and cons and compile to conduct a study, it will be better. Yes, we will reflect your view and to the relevant department and also refer it to our consultant. Mr. Qua Wai K. On Hong Kong Island, traffic is usually congested and there is a keen demand on road traffic. For the South Island Line East section, it will be commissioned in twenty fourteen, fifteen. So when it comes to the Railway Development Strategy Two Thousand, the update and review, it covers North Island Line and Sichuan One Line. I understand that the report will be released at the beginning of twenty fourteen. So after the study is completed, if the public's view is still strong, asking for them for this, then will they expedite the project? And in relation to reply zero four eight, in relation to the number of practitioners in the water-transport industry and also their age distribution. In twenty twelve, when it comes to the number of practitioners and licensed seafarers, engineers and masters, the age range is fifty-one to seventy, which accounts for over half of the total number of practitioners. And when it comes to those that are younger, that is in their twenties and thirties, just over a hundred and eighty. And between seventy-one and eighty in that age group, the number has dropped drastically. That shows that they will retire before they reach seventy. So if you foresee that for those between sixty and seventy, they will in a year, in ten years' time retire. So you will lose about a hundred people. For twenty ten and twenty twelve, we're talking about a hundred and five trainees. It's a major shortfall. So in this regard, how will the administration step up this effort to encourage youngsters to join the industry? And I know that the figure include sea-going and vessels and also those operating in the waters of Hong Kong. Most of them are river vessels. So the actual figure is lower. So apart from training and the one thousand, and the nineteen point two million dollars for the SGTIS, that is a sea-going training incentive scheme. Are there any other measures to address the gap? In relation to the Railway Development Strategy, we are consulting different districts on the different options. Well, we're collecting views and aspirations. Once we have the results, we will not stop. We will then embark on more in-depth technical studies, also cost-effectiveness, etc. When it comes to investment and development of the railway services, we're talking about a long lead time and also a high level of investment. So we will not drag our feet, we will not stop. And when it comes to manpower in the sea-going, in the maritime industry, we noticed that there are risks and there is also acute, there is also a manpower shortage. So training manpower is very important. It's not just about the base at the elementary level, we're talking about professionals as well. So we have set up a training fund for maritime and aviation transport. Funding, of course, is very important. It also has to tie in with our policy objective. Let me see if the the Director for Marine has anything to add. For practitioners for all sea-going, ocean-going or vessels operating within Hong Kong's waters, in the past, over a hundred people have joined the incentive scheme. So far, there are two hundred and fifty people who have enrolled under the scheme. And over a hundred seafarers have obtained sea certificates of senior seafarer. And when it comes to local, the local situation, yes, we have an aging workforce and there is also a gap, succession gap. We've liaised with service providers and labor unions, trade associations to explore different ways to attract new blood. Mr. Yi Chi Ming. I have three questions, follow-up on my previous, my questions. First, reply number zero five two. Received lots of comments of those operating in the, in ports or typhoon shelters and that there is insufficient space. But the administration said that they had, there is sufficient space till twenty twenty-five, so there is no problem. When it comes to row harbor crossings, they said that we have free harbor crossings. The total capacity, we have a surplus capacity to deal with traffic. When it comes to Heilin Chow, Yim Tin Chai, typhoon shelters like that, for various reasons, they will not be used. So I ask the administration to seriously consider whether, well, whether they need to do more. Because we're talking about safety of life and also property. Another reply number one three three. About the secure air freight insurance, about a hundred percent X-ray security check in the, going to the US and also the EU. There are some assistance when it comes to certification. But there are some SMEs, some factories in the Pearl River Delta. I don't think they have the resources to meet such requirements. If they don't consider centralized security clearance, you're actually asking them to just fold up and shut down their business. Please seriously consider it. The other one is reply number one eight two. I have a question. Now, when it comes to the airport district, there is a serious manpower shortage. Currently, there, there are six thousand vacancies. What I know is that it is very inaccessible. The transportation network is not very good and they run on shift system. The administration said that we have an excellent network of bus levels. But people are reluctant to take buses because the route is convoluted. My question is whether they will consider letting a GMB to operate in the, in the area? Because this will help companies in recruitment. In relation to the typhoon shelter, I will ask the Director for Marine. And in relation to the secure air freight insurance and other questions, I would defer to another one for the to the DS and also airport GMB, I would defer to the Transport, Commissioner for Transport. There are altogether fourteen typhoon shelters. They are for the use of all Hong Kong vessels. But there is a high mobility for these vessels and they may operate in different locations. So provide, they, there are sufficient births for these vessels. But for some areas, it's busier than others with more vessels. So when it comes to the ports, there are a number of typhoon shelters. And they have a higher utilization rate. Since some vessels operate in different locations, they will use different typhoon shelters. Say in Kun Tong, the typhoon shelter, there were more vessels previously, but less now. And because some barges are working over in Tun Moon on the Hong Kong Joy Macau Bridge. So when it comes to typhoon seasons, it will be more cramped over those typhoon shelters. So we're, we actually have an assessment on territory-wide typhoon shelters. So it means that the Cross Harbor Tunnel will continue to have traffic congestion whereas the Western Tunnel will have a surplus capacity. For the second question, aviation, who is to answer? Ms. Chan.
First, I will answer and then I will defer to the Secretary General for Aviation. In relation to the enhancement of security clearance for the US, through our ETO in the US, we closely monitor the situation.
Throughout the world, security check for air freight is being tightened up. As far as I know, the CAD is working through the Hong Kong industry to have an exchange with SMEs on the mainland to explain to them how they can work with us. I defer to the Director of CAD. Director.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to say that all our security check procedures do follow the Annex Seventeen of the IATO. And actually, a new regulation has just been implemented. According to what the DS said, we are seeking an understanding and also we're communicating with the industry. And gradually, we are going to tighten up documentation requirements. And also, with regard to the application for agent status, we will also tighten up the requirements in order to align with the IATO. As for the European Union's requirements, they do not yet apply to Hong Kong. But as for the US requirement, in terms of passenger aircrafts, we are already doing a hundred percent security check. As for freight, the US has not taken further action. Commissioner for Transport, very briefly.
Chairman. At the airport and in Tong Chung, we already have franchised buses providing shuttle. Long Wind Route Number Sixty Four applies between Yat Tong Estate and the airport. If airport operators would like to provide shuttle buses for their staff, they can apply for non-franchised bus services. At the moment, we do not have any intention to operate new bus routes on Hong Kong Island, including GMB, but we will be watching the need.
Leng Chi Cheng. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on reply one sixty. I can see that the six ferry routes serving the islands are being subsidized. A hundred and ten million dollars are provided for seven items. And if you look at last year and the year before last, and if you look at the number of sailings and number of people taking the ferries, you see a drop in both. From eight million, dropping to two million. And this gives people the impression that perhaps your subsidy is insufficient, so the patronage is low. I'd like the administration to answer the following questions. Number one, is the drop in patronage due to the drop in people living on the islands? So fewer people need the ferries? Secondly, the administration provides over a hundred million dollars subsidy, so is it ineffective? Is it such that your subsidy has not allowed fares to go down, so people do not take the ferries?
Secretary. If we look at patronage, I don't think there is any particular drop. If you look at twenty twelve, thirteen, it is only up to December twenty twelve. In other words, the fourth quarter is not included. I would say that things have remained more or less stable. But in any case, for residents of the islands, ferries are the main means of transport. And that is why the administration is happy to provide financial subsidy to such ferry services. We are conducting an interim review to see how the subsidy should evolve. Sorry. Apart from these seven items, would the administration think about providing vessels to companies for carrying passengers so they can invest less? And so that they can give concessions to the public in the fares? Secretary. We will try our best to think of ways and means to allow non-fair revenue for ferries. As for other support measures, the paper details six to seven measures. In the long term, should we just provide this kind of support? Would that allow islands to be served by these ferries on a sustainable basis? We will consider it. Mr. Leng. I'm talking about the government buying, actually buying the vessels for the companies to operate so that the operating cost will go down, so that there will be less pressure on fares. If we go for
If we go for existing support measures and if the ferry services are sustainable and there are these operators, then to the administration, we don't have to think of other ways and means to support them. But of course, if these services prove to be very uh difficult to sustain, then maybe we can consider other matters. Can you let me know the number of sailings and patronage for the four months?
Well, yes, when we have the figures for the fourth quarter, we can certainly do it.
Mister Tang Kapiu. Thank you. I can see this figure and it's very worrying to me. Zero zero one, please. A question by Ms Gary Chan. But the figures there are very enlightening. It asks about delays in passenger flights and the for those which exceed fifteen minutes. It has gone up from twenty-three percent to twenty-nine percent and also twenty-three percent to twenty-seven percent in terms of arrivals and departures. We thought that our aviation operation is quite good, but why is it that you have got so many flight delays? And yet you're asking for the community to support your building of the third runway. Now, of course, we understand that you may have a manpower shortage, but this does not only apply to transport. This has something to do with frequent change of shifts and mandatory or strong encouragement for working overtime and also a poor remuneration for workers. Given an unemployment rate of just three point five percent, who would be happy to go to the airport? In Tong Chung, you have eighty thousand, ninety thousand people, those who are happy to at work at the airport have already done so. So I'd like to ask the secretary, how can you seek to improve the package? Employment package for workers at the airport so more people would be happy to work at the airport so that uh existing workers will not be under so much pressure? And so that there would not be another collapse of the jetway? That's the first question. Secondly, uh it is said that the MTR fare adjustment mechanism will be announced soon. Last time, it was said that the six hundred million odd dollars profit will be totally rebated to commuters. I'd like to know how that was done. You provided one free trip for every ten trips taken. And of course, you would calculate the free ticket as one for the longest journey between Tong Chung and Chaiwan, but not everybody takes a journey of that length. So how can you make sure all the six hundred million dollars have been rebated to commuters?
Okay, on the second question, in the last year, the MTRCL promised that six hundred and seventy million dollars would be rebated, including by way of fare concessions and one free trip for every ten trips taken. From the figures, it seems there is still a distance from full rebate, a a very long distance indeed, said the chairman. The MTRCL said that it would improve the situation. And indeed, if within the year, if the full amount cannot be rebated, the money will not disappear. We will continue to press them to rebate commuters. And the administration will also vet its accounts to make sure that um what Mister Tang's worry will not uh come to pass.
Director of CAD. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Tang, for the question. Actually, flight delays indeed are increasing. There are many reasons for this. Uh meteorological situations and also when the economy is good, many flights are in demand. Since the opening of the Chelco Airport until this year, there has been an increase of five percent in flights annually on the average. And also sometimes aircrafts have to be repaired. And also sometimes it has to do with the building of the airport. For example, we are talking about building a third runway and providing more birthing space. And also, we lack about five thousand to six thousand people at the airport, and that has an impact on the operation of the airport. Now, how can we increase manpower? We can do a few things. The service providers can, of course, provide better remuneration and better working conditions. And also, there is a hundred million dollar fund for training manpower. And we hope in the time to come, we can train up more young people to join the aviation industry. Will you urge airport operators to increase salaries and improve conditions of service? Director, this is a commercial decision. I don't think I am in a position to ask companies at the airport to increase wages or salaries. All of a sudden, four more members have indicated their intention to ask questions. This meeting should end at five past one, and I don't want to eat into your lunch hour. So sorry, members. From now on, I will tighten up the time limit. And even officials have to stop talking at five minutes. Uh whatever is unsaid should be replied to in writing. Paul Chair, thank you. Parafah at eight of the um uh speech talks about the training fund, and this is also mentioned in reply one one five. You understand that it's very difficult to find aviation maintenance workers. And some trained people leave after half a year. You talk about this training fund, I think it's good, but a hundred million dollars for both aviation and maritime workers. Is it enough? And also, we have had this rare incident of a jetway collapse recently. Hong Kong has been ranked number one or two as the best airport in the world. But then we have had this rare accident and people are asking why on the radio. Some people within the industry complained that perhaps the airport authority deliberately underestimated or hidden some maintenance works so that the figures appeared to be good. And now the problems are surfacing. Now, I'd like to ask about this fund, a hundred million dollars. But you're only going to spend the interest instead of the capital, and yet it is for both aviation and maritime uh people and plus the recent accident. Do you think it is enough? Secretary. Uh we did not say that we only spend the interest gained instead of the capital of this one hundred million dollars. But as to how best it will be spent, we will look at the requirement of the manpower. The hundred million is for maritime and aviation training. And we are not only talking about frontliners. We also include professionals at the middle and higher ranks so that we can converge the different levels of manpower. Is it too small a fund if we uh implement it and we take stock of experience, then we will draw a conclusion. But at least, it shows the concern of the administration with regard to manpower supply in both maritime and aviation. And some other members have talked about the conditions of service, remuneration, and also prospects, et cetera, for the industries. I think we have to take these up with the industries. And through such programs, the administration, together with the industries and the academics, um I I hope there will be more cooperation. Mister Paul Chair mentioned the recent jetway collapse at the airport. I agree that this is indeed a very rare accident. Indeed, this is the first one. And therefore, the administration and the CAD are very concerned. We are asking for a very speedy investigation. When will the investigation report be available? Can I ask the Director of CAD to supplement? According to me, an investigation committee has been set up, including the AA and other independent and experienced people. There is also an investigation panel which will report. I think they will take about two to three months before the report will be available. Paul Chair, I'd like to follow up on a question. In the same paragraph of the speech, you talk about the study into building CT ten. You understand um because of the recent strike, uh which is still ongoing, and indeed, some people have diverted the freight to Yan Tian and Nansha. Have you evaluated this so-called feasibility study? And also, how will this strike and social campaign impact on CT ten? I think a member has answered, asked a similar question, and I have already said so. Sorry about that then. As to whether CT ten is required, we are doing feasibility and technical studies. And it depends on the strategic development plan for Hong Kong Port twenty thirty. So do we have enough capacity at the port? And how do we relate to ports in the neighboring area and also local and international factors? We will look at all these factors before we decide on whether to build CT ten. As to the recent strike, um which has moved some freight out of Hong Kong, our present assessment is that this is only for the short term. We hope the strike will be resolved soon.
Michael Tian. Thank you. The light rail is a historical legacy. I can see from the figures that when the light rail was designed, it was designated to serve a community of about three hundred thousand, that is so, for the entire world. But with developments in Tun Moon, Yunlong and Tin Shui Wai, from nineteen eighty-eight, the um passenger trips were just a hundred and eighty thousand. But in twenty twelve, there were four hundred and sixty thousand trips. When in nineteen eighty-eight, when it was built, there were seventy cars. Today, a hundred and thirty-nine cars. I asked MTR whether they could increase the number of cars. They said there was no more row space. In other words, a hundred and thirty-nine would be their maximum number. In other words, all these years, there has been a hundred percent increase of the number of cars, but the passenger trips have jumped by a hundred and fifty percent. What is the result? And according to figures of the administration, the delay rate is such that in the past five years, the number of passengers every hour has uh was from twenty-eight thousand to thirty-three thousand. And delays between eight to thirty minutes has increased from fifty-seven times every year to eighty times every year. But if you look at the entire MTR system, the number of delays and of every year for the last five years has come down from a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and sixty. In other words, um the number of delays has not exactly increased. However, that for the light rail has gone up from fifty-seven to eighty every year. In other words, they cannot add trains to the light rail, but more people are going into NT West. Uh there are more new properties being developed. And three, the delay rate has gone up. I'm telling the administration that this is a time bomb. You must resolve the issue. What I'd like to know is what the administration thinks about the development of light rail as a mass carrier for NT Northwest? Have you started a review? In fact, I have done a lot, and I'd like to let you know. I have talked to experts, and actually, in Kowloon East now, the environment-friendly conveyance being considered for Kowloon East can in fact be considered so that you reduce the pressure on light rail because now you do not have enough row space. However, there is aerial space available. What I'd like to know is whether you would do a serious review in this respect.
Well, if you're going to build that system, that will take about ten years or so. And if you don't do it now, there will be a problem with, a serious problem with NT Northwest. Now concerning the problem faced by the light rail system, we fully agree with Mister Tian. There is no room for adding more trains or cars. Uh that's something left from history. Uh it was the decision made there and then. As for NT Northwest, it is the focus of Hong Kong's development. And because of growth in population and activities, we need to plan ahead. Um we need to have a better transport network system apart from rail transport system. We also need other supporting system. And our railway development strategy has to respond to the overall demand for um transport service. We'll consider Mister Tian's suggestion. Now, have you started your study? Uh is there, how can you deal with the problem? Because of the saturation of the LRT. Well, there there are other means of public transport. Whether other transport, means of transport can cope is something we can consider. And one way, of course, is introduce more bus routes. But the uh LRT um this LRT fare is extremely low, and buses cannot afford that. And LRT occupies a lot of row space. You really need an elevated railway system. Uh next is um Ms Qian Lei Wan.
I have a question in relation to uh T H B O seven two. This is about the um three runway system. At present, uh EIA and is being done, planning is being done. Now, the airport is already very congested. During the holidays, I read from newspaper that there were more than one thousand flights per day. If you uh take away a few hours in the evening, uh in the late evening, it means um every flight per minute. I returned from overseas and the airplane was circling in the air for half half an hour. If it takes one minute for landing and for lifting off, uh that will mean a dozen or so uh planes are lifting, uh are being, uh taking off or landing. And if the traffic controller uh um is not um well concentrated, it will be, or if there is any hiccups with the system, um it will be very dangerous. Now, with more and more flights using our airport, say, will you impose a cap? We can only have one minute per flight. And can you reject the additional flights? And what is our capacity? How many flights can we take per day? Director of Civil Aviation.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms Chan, for her question. A few years ago, we've gradually um um released information and we are, we have conducted a study with two runways. The maximum capacity is sixty-eight flights per hour. That was announced to the trade many years ago, so that the trade can be prepared. At the end of March, we've reached sixty-four flights per hour. By twenty fifteen, we will allow the growth of flights to sixty-eight per hour. And sixty-eight is the top. Can we add more? That depends on manpower, on equipment, facility, flight procedures, or flight protocol. Now, during the um holidays and festivals, one thousand one hundred and seventy-two flights is a record. Um that was during Easter holidays. And that is a high, that was a high number. If we have sixty, sixty-eight flights per hour, then the daily throughput is just one thousand two hundred flights per day. We have adequate controllers and they have adequate rest. As for our air tran- uh air traffic uh control system, we have not encountered any we have not encountered any uh complete failure, though we have some uh small hiccups. The system is rather efficient. As so increasing number of flights, we'll keep on improving our protocols, increasing our manpower and try to upgrade our system to meet the demand trade, Miss Chen. I hope you really need to keep things under control. Um I'm concerned about air traffic safety with so many flights. And even your uh staff members have no uh time to rest if the airport is so busy. Now, according to the secretary, there is a shortage of construction workers and that may have an impact on the um works at the airport. Concerning the third runway, when will that be completed? Do you have a timetable? And will that be affected by the shortage of construction workers? Mister Chairman, with regard to the shortage of construction workers, that is a common topic when we talk to the trade. The administration is talking to the trade uh in order to deal with that. As for the third runway, uh the EIA study has been, is now being conducted. And planning, um no, um I have to stop you. Mister Lo Wei Kwok.
I want to follow up on THBT O nine two. Land for logistics industry. We have some uh long-term plans, say, uh whether there can be reclamation in Siho One in um Lantau, whether there can be a logistic park. And there is also the study and only study on Area thirty eight, thirty nine in with regard to logistic facilities. But they are in the distant future. A more um imminent arrangement is a two hectare site in Chengi. I have um received call for help from the logistics industry. They really need land for logistic facilities. Yet they are not able to get any land. Now, um is there any um uh are there any, is there any um statistics concerning the availability of sites for logistics uh industry? Say, um if they want to get land from the industrial estate, they still have to compete with other industries. So um there is very limited uh land available for the logistics industry. Now, the uh new term of government has not done very well in terms of providing land, not only for the logistics industry, but also for other purposes. I just want to know how much land is readily available for the logistics industry? Mister Lo is right that the whole community has a strong demand for land in terms of housing, in terms of transport. Uh we are scrambling for land. As for the demand for land by the logistics industry and as far as the concern for uh in this regard, um we are aware of the needs and we have the Logistics Development Council to uh deal with the problem. As for the development of Siho One, that may be in the distant future. But as for Area thirty nine and Area forty nine, Area thirty eight and forty nine, we are now consulting the district, the local people. We are conducting a TIA. We want to get the blessing of the district council as soon as possible so that we can start the project. Mister Lo. I also want to know the um land that can be ve- very readily available to the logistics industry. Siho One, um even apart from Siho One, you still are, there are other sites, but you have to go through certain process, say for example, consulting the district councils. For Area thirty eight and forty nine, when will the sites be available for application? Do you have a timetable? Can you give us any good news to the logistics industry? I really want to know uh more information about about the availability of sites for the logistics industry. I know that EIA for um the third runway is being done. Is there a timetable for its completion?
If I may also answer the question, uh um his que- uh the the members' question together with Chen's question. Now, we need to have a good EIA to make sure that the third runway uh will not uh cause any serious environmental problems. By twenty twenty three, the third runway will be completed. If everything uh implies with the timetable. We say assuming that EIA and other studies are approved and then works can commence and design can be, works, design can be done on time. And then we'll have that by twenty twenty three.
Uh Ma Feng Kwok. My question is in relation to number THBT zero zero eight. According to the uh rescue exercises coordinated by the uh CAD, different parties are involved, say um um the um Navy and also the Coast Guards are also involved. I want to ask the CAD concerning the joint exercises. Are the participants invited by the CAD or are are they the results of requests by other parties? They said that at the end of the year, there will be, or rather, at the end of twenty fourteen, there will be another exercise. Third parties, um what what parties we invited to join the exercise? Now, in coordinating the rescue exercises, um are the exercises only related to aviation disasters? What about marine disasters? Are there rescue exercises being coordinated? The Director of Civil Aviation and Director of Marine.
Thank you Chairman, thank you, Mr. Ma. Uh for a long period of time, the CAD from time to time uh have made arrangements for rescue exercises. And we have long haul and short haul rescue. And if we have enough manpower, we can have long haul and short haul rescues done uh in tandem. In two thousand three, two thousand eight, two thousand six, and also twenty twelve, we had such exercises. Whether we invite participants? Yes, we did invite other units to participate. And that includes the PLA, the People's Liberation Army. And we also invite the US Navy and US um Air Force to participate. We also participate as an observer in the rescue exercise conducted in by Southeast Asian countries. And we also invite um third parties to come as observer. As for local rescue units, we do invite them and that includes the police, the Marine Department, the CAD, Civil Aid Service, and also the um government flying um um and also um invite them to uh join our exercises. As for rescue exercises, are they limited just to air disaster? Of course, it is. Uh that's under the requirement of the ICAO. We need to be responsible for search and rescue coordination. The um rescue and coordination or the search and coordination is our role. And the secretary, or rather, the Security Bureau has tasked the Civil Aviation Department uh to coordinate the search and rescue task. What about marine disaster? Is it done by the um Director of Marine, the Marine Department? To answer Mr. Ma's question, every, yeah, we do have rescue exercises. Work with the fire services, the police, the uh government of flying uh service joining the exercise. Mainland units or authorities came or come as observers. In our, during our exercises, we'll make arrangements so that the whole exercise can test our communication and other aspects. And after the exercise, we conduct a review. Mr. Ma, I have no follow-up. I will extend the meeting by fifteen minutes. After Mister Leung Kwong has finished his questioning, we will conclude our meeting. Thank you Chairman. Concerning the Marine Department, the um director may be prosecuted. The simple question is whether there is any uh that whether there is adequate number of um life save, uh life jackets. If you don't have enough life jackets, the exercise is just useless. Now, in his kickoff speech, the secretary in second paragraph uh said, according to the agreement in two thousand seven, blah, 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 uh there was um fairly just uh fair arrangement. How can you make sure that the H, the the MTLC will not increase fare when it is making huge profits? Now, you say, uh according to market force, the small shareholders want to get maximum profit. Now, we've suggested a uh fair adjustment uh fund. Say, when there is a lot of profits, the money can be put in the adjustment fund to deal with uh fare increase. Now, somebody say, sir, that if you ask for buying back the shares of the MTLCL, that will only check up the price of the shares. But the government is holding more than seventy percent of the shares of the MTLCL. Now, if, say, out of the profit of ten billion dollars, four billion dollars will be used for the fare balancing mechanism, then people may throw, may sell the shares of the MTLCL. Then you can buy back the shares when the price goes down, when the share price goes down. You can turn the profits into a fund for infrastructure and a fund for balancing fares that will force the small, the shareholders to sell their shares. Say, if you earmark forty percent of the profits for that purpose, that uh will achieve that. And it can be done even in a private sector, in a private market. Uh will you consider, have you considered that? The secretary. With regard to the fair adjustment mechanism, in my kickoff speech already said that we'll try to extend the coverage uh to include the performance, profitability and affordability of the public. Last, at the end of last year, there was a motion debate um in this council for fair adjustment on the fair adjustment mechanism. I understand the members' view. The MTLCL is a listed company and want, we want to maintain that. And we have no intention to buy back the shares of the MTLCL. Chairman, I'm just asking this. If the majority of the profits are put into a fair adjustment fund or earmarked for further capital investment, uh say, there will not be any distribution of dividend. Now you're holding seventy percent of the shares. And if they sell ten percent or twenty percent, then you'll hold more of the shares, you'll buy back more of the shares. If you don't allow them to enjoy the profit, then they will not try to uh make profit out of the service. Now you can use your profits to buy something else. Uh Li Ka Xing made the mistake. Still, uh he loo, he lost money on three, on orange, on Husky. Mister Leung, after you have finished speaking, you must stop. When I ask the secretary to reply and you keep on talking.
You are the major shareholder. You can make this proposal once it's endorsed, and then they will sell the the shares. They have a lot of money, then you can just buy it up and then use the resources. You can also speak to Thomas X. Because that's what they they do with Li Ka Xing and uh other conglomerates. You can just play some financial tricks. Have you finished? Yes, it's very simple. All businessmen know that. When when I ask the secretary to answer, you continue to speak. It is very, makes it very difficult for me. You will have to indicate to me when you finish so that I can ask the secretary to start. Secretary, sorry, uh time's up. This is the end of the session, the next one, the next uh.